We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. If you please honor our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Counsel Noone.
Here.
Counsel Elliott. Counsel Kennedy.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Present.
Here.
Counsel Lori.
Here.
Counsel Martin.
Here.
Counsel Madonza.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Mr. Gignac.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Roz Sikewich.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Thirteen present.
Thank you. I'll read the special meeting notice. Notice is hereby given as required by Rule Six of the City Lowell City Council Rules. The City Council will hold a special meeting of Lowell City Council jointly with the Lowell School Committee in the council chambers on Wednesday, October 24th, 2012, at 5:30 PM for the purpose of establishing procedures for the selection of a candidate to a position on the Greater Lowell Technical High School Committee. This is something that I've asked that we look at to establish a proper process for the selection. And so at this time, I think we basically have two items on the agenda, determining what that process might be, the fairest, most efficient way to choose a candidate, and then, of course, to set a time for the next special meeting. Counsel Mercia?
Well, I don't know if it's the right way. Not that it should be my way or whatever, but I do know it's fairly fair to say that we know all five candidates for this appointment. Any one of the five that would be selected would serve memorably and do a tremendous job. I do have some reservations about lining them all up and questioning them like we're vetting the President of the United States because I already know who I'm... I've already made a commitment, and quite a few of us here have already made a commitment, barring the fact that maybe one that I wouldn't select saved five people out of a burning building. I don't know. But I just feel that we could probably set a time and a date to, you know, come back at another time unless people want to vote tonight. But I don't know. Do we have five people that are in here, or did some back out? Or what... We could submit a name of the five. I don't know, you know, what the procedure would be, but we've never, ever had five people come and question them and ask for their thoughts. And I've been... I spoke to all five of the candidates at one point or another, so I know where I stand with them. I know their background, and I know that they'd be tremendous, each and every one of them. But to sit here and say that we're going to have five people and we're going to all ask fifteen of us questions, I think that's not the way I want to go.
Counsel Martin?
Well, it is the way I want to go. And I don't know if there are five people. I don't know if there are less or more. I mean, there's certainly been some names mentioned in public. If there are five, I can't remember, up to five, I guess. But what I would suggest is that people that are interested submit a letter of interest to the mayor with a resume, that we schedule another night for an interview, and, you know, ask... Everybody will have a certain allotment of time, but I expect after, you know, four or five counselors or school committee people speak, most of the questions will have been answered. People can waive the rest of their time or not. And we, you know, maybe set a half hour for each person, hear from them all, and then have a vote. If there may be more than five, there might be less. If it gets to be such a high number that there needs to be a screening process, I guess we could revisit that. But I'm not anticipating that that's going to be the case. So I would think, you know, a meeting, if it's four people, a half hour each, that's a two-hour meeting. To me, that seems pretty reasonable. People can make their cases to why they think they'd be the best candidate to us, who are the people that have the vote, and to the broader public. So that would be my suggestion, that we set some sort of deadline for applications, some sort of date for an interview process, similar to what we do for the city manager or a school superintendent, and let that be the way we go.
Counsel Noon, and then Counsel Leahy.
I do concur with Counsel Martin. That is, this is a very transparent process to fill the seat in that we invite all candidates and give them amount of time, say, half an hour or an hour each candidate, and they can do their opening, limited to three to five minutes. And then counsel and committee men, school committee men or women can ask them questions. And with that limited time, it enables us to hear their response to the question being asked. And we open it to the public, and the viewer will also, you know, hear some of the response that some of the candidates, you know, have to certain questions that we ask, because this is an important seat at an important time at the Greater Lowell Volk. So I do concur with Counsel Martin that we should have this process, and this is the right process. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I was going to offer a sort of compromise, and my suggestion was going to be that maybe tonight we could agree on three questions. Why do you want to run? What are the major issues at the vocational school? And another question, have them come in. I think there's going to end up only being three, but they could come in, they have five minutes to introduce themselves, answer the questions in that time. It could be five or 10 minutes, whatever it is. Then we vote. So just keeping it simple, that was my suggestion.
Counsel Lori?
I think I like the half-hour idea, have them come in, introduce themselves to the public, and the reasons why they want to be there. I wouldn't... I don't like the idea of questions that are pre-made up. If the counselors, the school committee people want to issue a question to each candidate on their ability or based on their ability or their biography, I think that... I would be more inclined with that. At the end of... When we're done and we select a candidate, I was going to make a motion that we end this system. I was going to ask if there's support among the council and the school committee to refer to the law department to question that if a seat opens after this time, that it goes to the person on the ballot who is next in line. We do it for the school committee, we do it for the council. It's not a state election where you'll have a runoff or a national election. This is a local seat. And I was going to present that question, and I say it now so everyone has a chance to think about this, but this current system, I'm not really a big fan of this. I know just about... I know them all. I know all the candidates. And I concur with Counsel Mercia. I think anyone who gets this seat is going to do an outstanding job, and I think the person that the council and the school, the combined council and the school committee pick will do an outstanding job. They're all well-qualified. But I think, looking at the elections, the way they're held in Lowell, I know Counsel Leahy just came on, and in the past with the school committee, whoever was on that ballot would then assume... These people ran campaigns, they went out, and they met people, they got familiar with... And to me, it would just make sense to look at going to that system, if there's support amongst the group. Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went through this process once before, and when I did it, what we did was we just had the council and the school committee meet, and everybody voted in the same way that the mayor is selected in January. So the scenario that Counsel Martin is suggesting sounds like a really good one, and maybe might even be a better one, except if there are already a majority of the people who will be able to vote, if they're already committed. And if they are already committed, then there is no point to holding such interviews. Now, I've had an opportunity to meet with one of the candidates... I'm one of the few people, I think one of the few people, that is not committed right now. I've had an opportunity to meet with one of the candidates. I had scheduled a meeting with a second candidate for Friday afternoon, and so I would not be interested in voting this evening. The other three candidates, my understanding is that at least one of those three candidates is out, and I have not heard from the other two candidates. I think it would, if we're going to adopt the scenario or the process that Counsel Martin is suggesting, that it would be good to have a window of time at which candidates can apply. But if there's not eight votes, then it's senseless for anybody else to apply or to have an... Give us a letter of intent. If there aren't eight votes for them to get, and if there are... A majority of the votes are already committed to one candidate or the other, then what's the point, I guess, is the way I would look at it. And so I'm not ready to vote this evening, but I also don't think there's five candidates. I think there's just two in the race, at least two that have contacted me. I would like the opportunity to meet with the second candidate, and then at that point, I would be ready to vote. When I've met... When I met with the first candidate, and when I will be meeting with this candidate on Friday, I would ask... I'm going to be asking, and I did ask, the questions that I would be asking at a public meeting. But again, it's a... The whole effort is not worth much if a majority of the people are already committed to one candidate or another. And my sense is that that's what the case is here. Thanks.
Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mayor. I think from the standpoint, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Kennedy's saying in terms of if you already have people committed. I haven't had a conversation with... I don't think any of you, maybe Mr. Leahy and I, had a brief conversation regarding what you're thinking about in terms of this whole issue. So I think out of respect for the actual position, out of respect to the voters, we probably could have an area or scenarios, Mr. Leahy articulated, two or three questions asking to the candidates, whoever they may be, in terms of what you think about the Lowell Volk, what do you think the Lowell Volk should be going in the future? What are your top priorities for the Lowell Volk Technical School, excuse me? I'm definitely going to be in favor of that. I think having that meeting and having a vote thereafter, I think, would be the most appropriate manner, so we do resolve this before we get into the, you know, Thanksgiving season. Hopefully, we can do that prior to even... Probably could do it next week if we oppose the position. I don't know what the actual timeframes or the law allows. You could probably ask the city solicitor in terms if it's something you're asking for resumes for other folks who may be also interested, who may change people's minds when they come forward. So I'm definitely going to support having a, at least a brief discussion period with any proposed candidate, out of respect for the position. And then I think after that, we should be making up our minds and vote.
Any further discussion? So at this point, we need a motion to establish some kind of process. Counsel Martin?
I'd make a motion that we set Friday as a deadline to get in expression of interest, and if next... When's the next school committee meeting?
Next Wednesday.
And I think, and I would suggest maybe a day next week to schedule interview and vote. I don't think the council night works next week, but perhaps Wednesday or Thursday would.
Motion by Counsel Martin, seconded by Counsel Madonza. On the motion, Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, we don't have a meeting, a school committee meeting, so probably next Wednesday, another special meeting and resolve it. At that point, we'd have ample enough time to complete the task. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Kennedy?
Could you read the motion, please?
So the motion is to establish a deadline for Friday for people to submit letters of interest for the position, and then to set a meeting time for sometime next week, probably on the following Wednesday.
To vote?
To actually vote on...
Interview and vote.
Interview and vote. Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
I would just like to say that I think Wednesday might be a problem.
It's Halloween.
The Thursday, the first, November 1st.
Okay. So to establish a meeting that works for the joint committee, basically, probably...
So we're going with Thursday now?
Yes.
No.
Counsel Lori?
Thursday, November 1st, they have the Lowell High Distinguished Alumni Award Night, and I... We have six school committee people here and nine counselors. I don't know how many have committed to go to that.
What time is that at?
That's six to nine.
I think as part of the motion, we can just leave it up to myself to figure out what a appropriate time sometime next week is. I don't know that we have to set a day and time right now, but...
I just thought it might be easier for you, Mr. Mayor, to set it when everybody's here, rather than to be polling people when they're not here and have to make the phone calls and so forth, or the emails or whatever to do it. It's... I mean, if next week doesn't work, then how about November 8th?
Any discussion for Counsel Elliott?
Why couldn't we do it before council meeting? Is there something scheduled?
I'm good with before council meeting. That puts...
How long are we looking at a meeting? I mean, interviews of a half an hour? Right?
That's crazy. It's crazy.
I think we're down to three candidates, so...
That's fine. Maybe more candidates will come in, but just a suggestion.
Mr. Conway?
The one concern I do have is that when we're talking about a half an hour for each candidate, at this particular point, I... It's the first time I heard tonight that there were five candidates. I didn't think there were five candidates. Now, if we open this up, what if we receive 10 or 15 applications or individuals that have interest in this particular position? So what do we do at that particular point? Is there another process that we're going to need, another step before we bring it down to whether it's three or four candidates? Because if all of a sudden... And I'm not saying it's going to happen, but I think we have to be prepared for the fact if all of a sudden seven or eight or 10 people come walking through the door and they have interest in becoming a member of the Volk School Committee, here we are locking ourselves into a half an hour for an interview. So that obviously can create a little bit of a problem here. I don't know if, again, if there's some way that we can narrow that down prior to... Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What about Monday night?
Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the other thing that I point out, too, is if we're going to have 30 minutes of each candidate, and there's 15 people here, that's two minutes for each person, which is probably not enough time for each person. But what about Monday, the 5th, which would be before the council meeting? And if we close out the, you know, close out the time for people to apply or send a letter of intent, then if you could schedule it according to what you anticipated we needed for time. You know, if there are six candidates or eight candidates that apply, then obviously we'd need more time, or maybe we'd have to do it on two evenings. But if there are, and I anticipate there's just going to be two candidates, and if there are just two candidates, then does... I don't know if Monday works for everybody, and maybe a little more time than 30 minutes, given that there's 15 people to ask questions.
Counsel Lori?
What night do we have the special meeting with the manager?
That's the 30th.
That's the 30th?
Yeah.
We have a subcommittee meeting, Transportation, at 5 o'clock. I was hoping we'd be able to maybe start the special meeting a few minutes later and do it, but it doesn't look like a good night either.
Does the... Does November 5th, that Monday, work for people?
Works for me.
Okay.
Yes.
So the motion would then be to establish a deadline of Friday for people to submit letters of interest, to set a meeting for Monday, the 5th, at 6 o'clock? And what about to Mr. Conway's point, if there are more than, say, four or five candidates? Counsel Madonza?
I... Well, if there are more than five, then I would suggest that we just send copies to everyone involved, and we pick our top three, say, and no more than the top five out of those would be actual get the interview. They would have to be among the top selection from the people that reviewed the resumes, although I don't think it's going to be a problem. So as long... If it's less than five, we'll just have them show up. If it are up to five, and if it's greater than five, then we'll review the resumes beforehand, and maybe the Friday before the 5th. What's that, the 3rd? 2nd? By Friday, the 2nd, we would have submitted our selections, and then they'll be tallied up, and the ones with the most votes would be the ones presenting to the full body.
Okay. Does everyone understand? Counsel Kennedy?
I don't understand exactly how you expect the vote to go. I think the vote has to go the way the mayor's votes. I'm not sure that you can change that.
No.
That...
No.
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 Counsel Martin?
I think, as we've done it for manager candidates, so if we had eight, right? If we had eight candidates, everybody would submit their top five? Right? Or top three? Top three. And then whoever had the most votes of that, those would be the people who would be interviewed. And the vote still goes like the mayor's vote goes.
Everyone understand what the motion is? Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea that Counsel Leahy had, that you submit three top questions and have all eight, if they be eight, or if they be two, to sit up there and give an introduction as to who they are, why are they running, what goals do they have, and make it point-blank like that, instead of 15 people like a circus asking questions off and on. It's ridiculous. I don't have a problem with Counsel Leahy's motion to ask three questions of them and let each candidate have a, like, 15, 20 minutes each or whatever. That makes more sense than 15 people grilling them like...
Mr. Leary?
No, I agree with Counselor Mercia. I think if we could have... You could almost have the mayor and the vice chair of the school committee get together and have three... Look, we can all send questions and pick the top three questions and ask the individuals, and that way they can have like a two-minute or a three-minute introduction of who they are, why they want to run. You get the canned questions that we've all participated in. I would be willing, as a school committee member, to let our vice chair, Mr. Conway, speak on behalf of the school committee for questions, and I'm sure the mayor could... You guys could come up with three quick questions, ask them, and then we can vote. But I totally agree with that. If you could... If that's something you could change the motion to reflect that, we could be respective of the process as well as getting good information and make a decision. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's Mercia brings up a good point. Fact is that, you know, anytime you're interviewing someone, I think you have to be pretty consistent with the questions so that you can compare what the answers are with all the candidates. I think that, for the most part, that's usually the way an interviewing process takes place. And I agree with you, starting to ask, you know, 15 questions being asked, and sometimes you might even have a follow-up question. It would be a very daunting situation, and I think that, again, to narrow it down, because the bottom line is, if you come up with three, I think, very salient questions, you certainly can get a... An excellent feel for whether this person would be a good candidate for that particular position or not. Thank you.
So as I understand the... Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to be contrary, and chances are, because I'll have interviewed the two candidates, that I won't have any questions, and I may not have anything to say. But I... If I have a question that I want to ask, then I would... I want to reserve the prerogative to ask that question, and if it's not one of the three questions that's decided upon by the vice chairman of the school committee and yourself, then I want to be able to ask that question. And I think that anybody that's here that's going to be voting should be able to ask, if they have a certain interest and a certain question that they want to ask. If it's not one of those three, they should be able to ask that question.
Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a good compromise for both sides is to come up with three or four questions, allow these individuals to give an opening statement, and during their opening statement, address those three or four major questions, and then open it up to the council and the school committee to ask any follow-up questions. At that point, odds are, most of the members here will not have any other questions, but that way, if in an instance where Counsel Kennedy has, maybe somebody can do a follow-up. I think that's a fair compromise. Thank you.
I think that's an excellent compromise, Mr. Mayor.
So as I understand the motion, we'd have a deadline of Friday, October 26th. Friday, November 2nd would be the deadline, in the case that there were more than five candidates, to submit your top three candidates, and also to submit three to four questions that would then be incorporated into an opening statement. The meeting would then be scheduled for Monday, November 5th, at 6:00 PM. Is there any further discussion on timelines, maybe? Counsel Martin?
I would suggest that the questions be in this Friday. Gives you time to compile them, and then if we're going to ask people to be prepared to address them on the 5th, they should get them next week as opposed to...
Sure. Any further discussion on the motion? Counsel Lori?
In the event we do take the vote that night, and we do put someone on the board, I'd like it, at least on the notice, unless we take a vote tonight, just to see if it's going to go that far, is to have the joint council and school committee refer it to the law department, a question of changing it to the next person on the ballot. While we have everyone here, it would have to be both sides. It would have to be a joint vote to seek a change or to look into a change, and I would like to have that vote be before we conclude the process.
Sure.
And I don't know if there's enough support here, if you want to take a vote tonight to see if we're going to go any further, but...
We'll wait until after this motion now.
Sure, that's fine.
Any further discussion on this motion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Noone?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Lori?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Roz Sikewich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
15 yeses.
A motion by Counsel Lori to refer to the law department...
Yeah, the question, actually, to put it at the public hearing that night, a question to the law department, asking about the ability to change the process from the council and school committee selecting the individual to it going back to the prior ballot in the next person taking the seat.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Mercia. Any discussion? Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to point out that this doesn't happen that often. Only once in a while, and I think in the past 20 or 25 years, it's only happened two or three times. And the way that we're doing it this time is a little different from the way that it's been done in the past. But it isn't... The way that it's done right now is not all that bad. I think when you look at the city council ballot or the school committee ballot, those ballots, the people who run for those offices, the... It goes deep, and those... Sometimes on the regional school board, there aren't that many people that run for the positions. And so you could, for instance, not have anybody sometimes. So you have nobody to choose from, and then there's no ability to pick somebody. But on the other hand, if there is just one extra person, I'm not... I really am not in favor of giving that person the seat, just because the next person, just because this process is a little bit different. This doesn't happen that often. It's really not... There's nothing the matter with the way that it's done now. And also, too, I believe, and I'm not sure of this, but I believe that this is set by the school charter, this process. I think that's why we're doing it. by the school charter, this process. I think that's why we're doing, doing it this way.
Counsel Lori?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to be consistent with the rest of the ballot. The city council, the 10th-place finisher comes forward, and the school committee, the 7th-place finisher. These people ran, they had a reason to run. They probably gone at a couple of thousand votes in the election. And tonight, we're going to put someone on that board with eight votes, who is going to vote on contracts for the superintendent, contracts for the employees. The possible, the possibility, what's being done now, is furthering the construction out at the, the school. I always look at it, they put their name on the ballot, they ran, they probably had 2, 3,000, 4,000 votes and lost, as opposed to just eight people selecting the person to sit on that seat. And I just want, it's just my wish to be consistent with the school committee, and with the city council, to look into it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Martin?
I, I'm going to support the motion, but, you know, I think, I agree with a lot of what Counsel Kennedy said. This, first off, we didn't come up with this process. This is, you know, any meeting of 15 people is going to be a little cumbersome. And, but it's by the state law, I believe, the state statute that set up the school. So we're kind of stuck with it. Happy to have the solicitor look at it, and we can debate whether it's wise to change or not, but it's the system we have now. I think the last person who was selected this way was George O'Hare, who's had a pretty good tenure of service at the school. So it's, at least in the past, it's worked okay. As much as the process is cumbersome, and awkward, and unfamiliar to a lot of us, it has led to decent results. That being said, I understand Counsel Lori's point, perfectly willing to take a, a fresh look at it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Roll call?
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Counsel Leahy?
Uh, yes.
Counsel Lori?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel M'Donaher?
No.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Ross Stickewicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
13 yays, 2 nays.
Entertained the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Kennedy, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.